Okay, good evening. Tonight is February the 7th, 2023. We are meeting with the Hanson Select Board, and this is being televised via Whitman-Hanson Community Access. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and Mrs. Rain is not feeling particularly well this evening. And so, to fill in for Mrs. Rain, Mr. Hill is going to read us the public announcements and upcoming meetings.
All right. Nomination papers for the May 20th Town election are now available at the Town Clerk's Office for the following offices: Moderator for a three-year term; Two Select Board for three-year terms; Assessor for a three-year term; Board of Health for a three-year term; Cemetery Commissioner for a three-year term; Planning Board for a five-year term; Hanson Housing Authority for a five-year term; Two Trustees of the Public Library for three-year terms; Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Committee, 3K to 12 for a three-year term; And Water Commissioner for a three-year term. Each candidate, prior to obtaining blank nomination papers, shall sign a statement containing his/her name and address and the town office for which he or she intends to be a candidate. The last day to obtain nomination papers is Monday, March 27th, 2023, and nomination papers must be returned to the Town Clerk's Office by 5:00 PM Friday, March 31st. We are looking for clients, citizens at large, to become members of the Hanson Historical Commission and Hanson Community Preservation Committee. Volunteer applications may be found on the Town website, or by calling the Selectmen's Office at 781-293-2131. And then upcoming meetings, we have the Select Board meeting, February 21st, 2023, and a Select Board Strategic Planning Session at Camp Kiwanis, March 7th, 2023.
Well done, Mr. Hill. Thank you for giving Mrs. Rain's background. With that, we will move on to our agenda, and our first item on the agenda is the Comcast hearing. And is there an official notice I'm supposed to be reading? Because I don't have one. And I feel as though there is supposed to be something that I'm supposed to read. There is a notice. There we go. One moment. Do a little improv. Fantastic. Okay. The Hanson Select Board will hold a public ascertainment proceeding hearing on Tuesday, February 7th, 2023, at 6:00 PM pursuant to 47 U.S.C. Section 546, Section 626 of the Cable Act regarding the renewal of the cable television license of Comcast Cable Communications Management LLC, formerly Comcast of Massachusetts Inc., otherwise known as Comcast. The purpose of the proceeding is to identify the future cable-related community needs and interests and to review the performance of cable operator under its current cable license. Anyone requiring accommodations for virtual access to the meeting is asked to contact Hanson Town Minister's Office during regular hours. I don't think I need to read the rest of that, because we're here. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to open the hearing.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, great. Thank you very much, Ms. Rain. And with that, I will, I think, turn it over to Lisa for a little foundational information.
Yes, Madam Chair, ladies chair, members of the board. So we have right now a license with Comcast that runs for basically a 10-year term from June 2nd of 2015 to June 1, 2025. And basically, it's required to start the renewal process for this license well in advance because of all the formalities that need to take place. This evening is one of those formalities where we're going to have a public hearing. And to go over the specifications, I will turn it over to our attorney, William Solomon, who is representing the town in this process.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, good to be here. Board members, Bill Solomon, your cable counsel. I've worked with the town on the last two renewal licenses, and it's been a great process. You've, as a town, together with Whitman-Hanson Community Access, have built a very, very strong community television PAG access program, PAG meaning Public Educational Government Access Television. You know, and I don't need to tell you that, but as you know, during COVID, never has community television and the assistance that they provided to both towns, Whitman and Hanson, and across throughout the Commonwealth, never has it been stronger and never has it been recognized as being such an essential part of the community. If you remember back at the beginning of COVID, there were the essential workers. Well, those were the essential workers who allowed democracy and government to continue. Otherwise, Vermont would have ceased. And as you know, that's continued, where people have a higher expectation of seeing government and public activities more in their schedule. And, you know, that's a good thing. Well, I work across the Commonwealth, and I know that if you show me a community that has strong community television, I'll show you a community that works together as best as possible in democracy toward its goals. So I've been working with Lisa. It's been very, very helpful. We're here for a hearing. I'll just say a few words on the hearing. The Cable Act is an amazing piece of legislation. It's federal law, and what it does, it incentivizes both sides to figure out what's important first to the town. What are your future cable-related community needs and interests? And to sit down and to discuss those with each other and arrive at a cable license, as Lisa said, the Commonwealth for almost always for 10 years with Comcast and a traditional cable company, and arrive at that by figuring out what's important to each side. In a world where there's a lot of litigation and fighting, this is an amazing act. And what's discussed here today and throughout the ascertainment process that's been going on makes a difference when the town sits down with Comcast and goes over its needs. Because Comcast began as a local company, a small company, and the folks who are still here today or the inheritors of that tradition understand localism. I often say, ask Google or Facebook or Apple to come to Town Hall. You know, they're not going to be here. Comcast has government affairs representatives. They know the town. They know about the access program to a reasonably large degree, and they'll come to Town Hall and negotiate. Are they a big company? Are they tough negotiators? Sure. But they understand that the stronger community television is, the better that their product is, the better that their business is. One final note. Sometimes at here, at meetings or hearings, someone will say something, and then someone else will say the same thing, and maybe somebody else repeat the same thing, and people will say, oh, my God, everyone said the same thing. But here, that's fine. Because we could meet with Comcast, who'll be viewing this, by the way, Kathy Maloney. You have a tremendous government affairs representative from Comcast. Kathy Maloney was unable to be here because of a personal commitment, but I know Kathy, we'll be sending her a link through Eric Dresser, and she'll be watching this hearing. And if, in an instance where, let's say, no one said anything after the first person, Comcast representative could say, well, only one person mentioned that, and there might be five people at the hearing. So this is our chance to get a good 10-year license, and this hearing makes a difference. So with that said, I'll turn it back to Lisa, and I'll have some final words at the end, unless the board has any questions. And thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Green.
Okay, at this point, I will actually have Eric Dresser, who is the Director for Whitman-Hanson Cable Access, come to the podium and say some words.
All right. Give me a second while I bring up a little presentation here. I know we have some guests here that have joined us, some of them at our request, to come in and speak about the impact of WHCA. So I want to give kind of a very brief introduction about WHCA and then give way, if it's all right with you, and let those folks speak so we can be respectful of their time. We do appreciate their coming out. So I did, as I said, put together a little presentation. I'm just going to get that screen share going. I don't think we've got anybody on the meeting, but I'll put it up there with the help of Ryan. Find this meeting. Here we are. So anyway, I'll start from memory here, and I'll just say that you guys have probably all seen me here before. Eric Dresser, the Executive Director of WHCA. And I have been with WHCA since 2017. But I'll tell you a little bit about some of the history. And again, I know that you folks know it because you've been here. But as Bill said, we're going to be telling a little bit of that history so that it's on the record for Comcast as well as part of this hearing. Ryan, is that not showing up? Oh, I'm sorry. Do you want to have my presentation? All right, I'll try this one more time. And if not, I will just add it in somehow. I guess we'll just make a link to it. Ryan, do you want to try to plug that in? Let me see if I can do that. Is it going to work?
Yes, you can just switch it to front. There's nobody on the screen.
Thank you. All right, so you guys know Ryan. He's one of our staff members. We've got another, I think, six or seven folks. This Kevin, who's also sitting here in the audience, who is one of our staff members. You guys have seen around for a while helping us with production and doing wonderful studio interviews. We also have a volunteer board of directors, which is, at this point, comprised of three folks from Whitman and three from Hanson. What are we looking at here? Sorry, that does not work. It's as if we didn't test this beforehand. I'm just going to proceed without it. I apologize. And so anyways, again, you guys know about the community that we serve. You know the communities of Whitman and Hanson. Please try to do this. Okay, so there's our staff, and there's our board of directors. We've got Arlene Diaz and Dave Bouvet, who are here in the audience. We've also got Marcus Lynn, who's another member from Hanson. Mark can't be here tonight because he's involved in so many other things, which is too bad, because he could speak about a lot of the other areas where he's involved. But I think we'll have great representation here from those who are here.
If you'd like, I'd be more than glad to call a recess if you want to.
Yeah.
Okay, why don't we call a brief recess?
Yeah, you might could see that there.
No, it's fine.
A lot of work went into that. I appreciate that.
So we'll call a brief recess of five minutes or so. Okay, so we are back from recess, and we'll turn it over to you, Mr. Dresser.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate the moment to get this up and running. A lot of work went into putting this together, not only from me in terms of putting together the graphics, but Ryan did a lot of great research about some of the numbers and things, which you'll hear about after the testimony. So this is our staff. Hopefully, you've had a chance to meet many of them around the community. Ryan's in the back, as I said. We've got Amanda and Brian, Guy, Kevin, Paul, and Rob. Amanda, Guy, and Rob are relatively new in the last three months or so, maybe closer to six. So we want to kind of have a deep bench so that we can get out there and cover all the wonderful stuff happening in the community. And then we, of course, have our board of directors, which I was speaking about. Well, I'll repeat it anyway, because it's cleaner. We've got Arlene Diaz in the back of the room here, Dave Bouvet, sitting next door, and then Marcus Lynn, who's our treasurer. And we've got three members from Whitman as well. And so it's a volunteer board of directors. We meet on a once-a-month basis, and we talk about, you know, where the organization's going to go and kind of run things month to month. You guys know about the town, but for the sake of Comcast, to make sure that it's all on the record here, I'm kind of highlighting Hanson. We've got a population in 2020 of just under 11,000 people, and cable subscribers in 2021, just under 3,000 people. Those are the latest numbers that existed on either of those two from where I researched. And you can see kind of over on the other side how Whitman relates to that with a population of just over 15,000 in 2020 and just over 4,000 cable subscribers. A little bit about WHCA's history, just sort of an abridged version, because I could go on and on. It's been a pretty neat story. But basically, WHCA was established in 2005, and through those early years, we spent a lot of time kind of working on formulating the building and the operations over there over at our studio on South Avenue, Whitman. Around 2009, a lot of the focus moved to doing more field work and upgrading the work that allowed us to be out in the field, truck, and things like that. First cable license renewal came, or not first as WHCA, but there were some others that predated it, which Bill mentioned. Came around in 2015, and we began at that time looking at improving our programming and technical quality, started moving to an HD production environment, tapeless workflow, digital transport throughout the town, and back to Comcast. So in the last, since the last cable license, we've seen what I thought, when I came on in 2017, was a really sharp-looking cable station, really nice quality-looking picture. In 2016, WHCA was surprised, as was both communities, and deeply saddened by the loss of their first and longtime executive director, Steve Rowley. And that's where I came into the picture, was shortly after that, starting in about 2017. So when I came in in 2017, prior to that, I had been working at some other access centers across the South Shore. So I feel that I bring a good perspective of other things happening in the area. And I tried to bring some of that to WHCA, and I initially focused on sort of institutionalizing and setting up our website and our email systems and things like that to better work to interplay and interface with the other community organizations. And that's something that's served us really well, and I think you'll hear about it tonight. In 2017, we renewed our access agreements with both Whitman and Hanson. You may recall that process. And we basically moved after that to start working on improving our playback system and installing what we call our CRM. I should have advanced this. To track our users and our volunteers and our equipment checkout, as well as all of our programming, what manages all of that. So that all happened in 2018, and shortly after that. And as part of that, we also took on management of the cable channels for the education, well, from the schools. So the educational channel is now programmed by WHCA. And then in 2020, right before COVID, we took on updates to this room, the HD cameras you see. We did that same project in both towns, Whitman and Hanson. We barely got a chance to use it before COVID came along and turned everything on its heels, turned everything upside down, like Bill said. And we quickly pivoted to, you know, get virtual meetings set up and all that. And we thought it was going to be two weeks at first, and then maybe two months, and something like two years later, and we're still kind of doing the hybrid thing. And it still doesn't always work like you think it's going to. But we just try to adapt, think on our feet, and take the best of it. In 2022, the towns began the process of renegotiating this next cable license, and that will last for the next 10 years. And roughly speaking, 2024, 2025, actually, in Hanson, 2024 in Whitman, is about the time that those next cable licenses will start. So we look forward to the, what is next, and to kind of show some of the value that we feel we've brought forth. Here's a handful of testimonials that I wanted to have something on the screen as I stepped away and opened the floor up to anybody who may want to come up and speak. Here's some excerpts from some of the things we've gotten. I've had two more come in since I sat down in the chair here in the room into our email. And I've got a stack of 10 or so in a folder up here as well. So I look forward to hearing what people have to say here tonight, and I have other stuff I want to submit as well. Really glad to see, and very appreciative of people valuing our work. So I'm going to just move this aside so other folks can come up and speak from this area. If that's all right with you, I'll just yield the podium.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So I don't know if you want to call anybody who might have, you know, time sensitive or anything like that to be first.
Was there anybody who had a pressing need to come first, or?
I don't know.
Okay, I mean, did anybody want to have any comments or anything they wanted to share?
I've got some questions. Am I in?
Okay, sure. I'll, we're going to go to Mr. White, and then we'll go to you. And when we, if people can just announce who they are, what your address is, and try to keep it as brief, but, you know, meaningful as possible. And we'll hopefully try not to repeat too much. I know, you know, that we may get some repetition, but I know you, Mr. White, but still, if you could go up to the podium and say who you are and...
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, Select Board. My name is Timothy White, 413 Brook Ben Road in Hanson. I'm the transitioning Veteran Service Officer for the Town of Hanson and also private citizen. So I'm here in support of WHCA, and I just wanted to relay an anecdotal story of their importance in the community. And so, and Mr. Solomon already mentioned, you know, the importance to community having access, and it helps our democracy and so forth. And I thought it was an outstanding point. I'd like to relay an anecdotal story of support and just take you back in time. You know, I think we kind of get used to that we're always, oh, we always have community access channel available to us. In 2020, at the height of COVID, if you remember, going back in memory banks, the governor had restrictions on how many people could gather together. And we were really contemplative about what to do for Memorial Day. And it was a very difficult situation. We didn't have really clear or set guidelines on what to do. We typically have a parade. There's a picture up there of the Memorial Day Parade. And we were limited to 10 people in the outdoor environment. And one of those 10 people that showed up at the ceremony, the Memorial Day ceremony, it wasn't a parade that year, was WHCA. And, you know, if you think about it, at that time, everybody was kind of locked down, or maybe they were just free to kind of move about. But, you know, they didn't have a chance to go to a parade that they've been going to annually for umpteen years. So the ability to project that and send that out to the community was huge. And just as a side note, like, we were trying to do, you know, new things that we hadn't done in the past. And Chair, I know you remember, we set up a link that the citizens could submit photos of what they were doing in their own personal lives for Memorial Day at their house, how they were decorating their house and flagging and stuff. And they sent that all in so that WHCA could run a loop. So for everybody who's stuck at home, they still had an opportunity to at least partake in Memorial Day ceremony.
And people sent in pictures of relatives.
Right.
Yeah, it was wonderful. It was really wonderful.
You know, changed it up. But really, the partner in all that was WHCA taking care of all that. So, and, you know, there's more to the story. I just think they provide a tremendous service to the community. I think, you know, they have to be with us, and I think we have to continue the relationship. So I wanted to relay that, too, that we never know, you know, kind of what era we're going through. I mean, we never, none of us here thought we would ever be limited to 10 people outside on the Town Hall trying to run a Memorial Day. But we had to. So you adapt, improvise, overcome, and do what you have to do. But WHCA was a great partner on that day, and really, every day. So I just wanted to relay that and thank them for their job.
Thanks. Thanks a lot, Tim. That was great. And sir, I know you said you, oh, I just had somebody who had raised their hand before you, sir, and then we'll get to you.
That's right.
Okay. Okay. If you can just tell us who you are and...
My name is Dr. Joel Jocelyn. I'm the principal of the Indian Head Elementary School right down the street. I do want to speak to the very constructive and beneficial partnership that exists between Whitman-Hanson Community Access and our school. To give you some examples, we, as an elementary school in the town, are very interested in having the community really get an inside look inside the school, what's happening. And we have had this partnership with WHCA where they go in and videotape many of the events that we have at school and post it on their website, onto YouTube, so that the community gets to see what's taking place inside the school. But even more than that, it's valuable in enhancing the leadership skills of some of our students. So we have a fourth grade student council that's very active. And part of the partnership that we meet, I mean, with Eric on a regular basis, they've actually brought physical equipment, video cameras, all kinds of things that they keep at the school. And we train some of our fourth graders to be able to do their own videotaping. That's amazing leadership. And then they come and take the stick, whatever, and he picks it up, bring it back to his office, does all the editing. And then the kids themselves, when it's posted, get to see their labor of love. You can't put a price on something like this in terms of not only developing their leadership skills, affirming what them as young people, and also potentially raising the next generation of, you know, videographers, you know, journalists down the road. So I think, in my view, not even looking at the other contributions that WHCA brings to the community, to me, just their contribution to our school is worth all the financial investment that the town could make. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very powerful. Thank you. Mr. Simonak, yeah. I'm sorry, sir.
Is that okay, sir? I do have some questions. I just have a couple of comments. Jeff Simonak, Superintendent of Schools, here on behalf of WHCA. And I echo what Dr. Jocelyn says, and I'm seeing comments from members of my district. I just want the board to know that 10 members of our school committee endorse WHCA unanimously. And I told Eric I would just come and say a few words as well. Being a principal and superintendent, I live in a world of Twitter, Instagram, Snapchat, and Facebook, and I think all reliable is TV. Because when I go home, I click on TV. It's a real medium for us to get our message out. So WHCA is at every one of our public meetings, every one of our, some of our subcommittee meetings. Our regional agreement committee is filmed. And it's an opportunity for people to see, live and sometimes recorded, what's actually taking place in our school district and our communities. And then I tweet it out and get that link. And I can just speak on behalf of, you know,[1701.38] know, Ryan and Eric and Kevin, they're professionals, they do an outstanding job, they're always unbiased in how they approach things, and they're always available. We've never been, been shot down, and it's a real way for, for our leadership to get our message, and then the school, the, the student aspect. I see teachers, they're at sporting events, they're at drama events, they're at art events, they are able to showcase and show our parents and our taxpayers what actually happens in our school. So they're a huge asset to our community, and I just wanted to give them my endorsement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Teresa, do you mind terribly, this gentleman has been extremely patient.
I just have a quick question before we even go out. Are we talking about the contract with Comcast and everything that goes with it? Are we focusing on WHCA?
Yes, yes, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And I have a few things.
Okay, sure. If you could let us, you know, just come up, let us know who you are, and, and to the extent, hopefully, we've got somebody here who can answer the question.
No, that's fine. Name's Carlos Caldas, 87 Waldham Street. Joe knows me.
I've spoken to him.
You and I have spoken on the phone.
Yep.
Is there, is there no cable committee?
We do not have a cable, cable committee, no.
All right. What has Comcast offered or said that they would do?
I don't, we haven't gotten to that point.
You haven't gotten to that part?
No, we're not, we, we haven't gotten actively into negotiations, where this is in anticipation of the negotiations.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to be part of that. You both know my background, I'm more than qualified. I'll leave you my business card, and this is on my time, not company time, nothing my company does even shows up here. I did already do the ethics thing, so...
Yeah, you know, it does seem to me, if you don't mind me just doing a little sidebar here. It does seem to me as though if we are gonna be entering into negotiations, that perhaps this would be the time for us to get a little subcommittee together to help address and push and advocate for the things that Hanson would want in this upcoming contract. Thoughts? You're looking pensive, that's why I'm looking.
No, well, yeah, I mean, I, I remember when, so last year, I appreciate that, last year, when we dissolved, we made a decision to dissolve this committee probably the first or second month, when I first became point of the board, I brought up that he was the only person on the committee at that time, and when we were just making the decision to dissolve the committee, I remember asking, has anybody reached out to anybody on the committee, and the answer was, no, we hadn't, but we want to reduce committees. And I think that this was, that was an opportunity for us to really try to, before removing things, figuring out, you know, how to utilize talent appropriately, and we never circled back to it. So I think this actually, to piggyback off your point, it, it makes, to me, it makes sense that if we have people that are willing to help out in some way, if we already had a foundation that existed and maybe we just weren't pitching it the right way, or trying to advocate for it in the way that we should, maybe it's worthwhile coming back to it.
Well, yeah, and I think, I, I, I'm not really sure why it became sort of, I, I don't know, it was like, they weren't doing, they weren't meeting, I don't think anybody was clear about what the purpose was, and so it was sort of like, what is going, so I don't, I don't know, I guess, and I'm not sure that it really matters where things jumped the track, but they definitely jumped the track, and at the point at which that committee was dissolved, it was because we had people applying that actually thought they were applying for the Whitman Hanson Cable Access Board. They, so there wasn't clarity about the, what the roles and responsibilities were. And I guess I'm looking to you, to, what do you see in other towns for committees? Okay. I'm, I'm sorry, what?
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Oh, well, no, I mean, I, we may, did you have any other questions or?
No.
Okay, okay.
But you have questions for me.
All right. We know that you're willing to, and I think if you could look quickly whether his appointment is still valid or if we need him to apply again, Lisa, is there any way to?
I think you have to create the committee again.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So we'll, okay, all right.
Sure. It's Mr. Solomon, Special Cable Counsel. Towns do it different ways. There are towns that have active cable committees that are active during the license negotiation. There are some towns where those cable committees are active all the time, so...
And what are they doing if they're active all the time?
Sure. Well, those that are active all the time will, will be the recipients of questions and complaints by subscribers or others who have concerns or have problems, and the town directs those questions or complaints to the cable committee. They monitor the, the license. Every quarter, there's a, a payment comes in. I oftentimes just forgot how towns out with that, and most towns just forget about it, but some towns monitor the payments that come in, they take a look at that. That's not, that's something that your treasurer and accountant wouldn't look at, they wouldn't really know, I've never seen a treasurer, accountant, or, or financial person deal with those payments that come in. There's, there's planning in terms of where the town wants to go in the future with respect to equipment at different buildings, you know? And so there are a lot of things that a committee could do, and, and the best committees are those that stay together in some way in between the, that, that 10-year period. With respect to the renewal license, you know, there, there is, there are times where it's helpful to have some more people who represent the community as part of the strategic leverage and the gravitas that's presented to the, the cable company. It's not necessary for negotiation, but it can be helpful, and may I suggest, if, when you look, my sense is if you're gonna put a committee together, you're gonna get some applicants, but if perchance you just have the one gentleman who's interested, one possibility, and you can discuss it another point, is to have the town administrator sort of have the gentleman assist as her appointee or advisor, resident advisor.
All right.
Advantage of that is that it's not a canard, it's truly that, that the individual is assisting the town administrator, and as a result, there are less formalities for every time we meet.
So kind of an advisory capacity.
Advisory capacity, but if you have more than one person, I recommend it be a board, a select board committee, but if it's one person, I think you can consider being sort of advisor to the town administrator, keeps it more informal and easier to meet with the, the cable company on, on quicker notice.
Okay.
So thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you for answering that question. So I think we've, just my two cents worth, perhaps we advertise that we make a motion and, we didn't post to do this tonight, so we can't do it tonight, but at our next meeting on the 21st, Lynn, if you could make a note of this, we have a discussion, and if the board feels that we want to exhume the cable committee and be a little bit clearer about what the mission is, because I think that was part of the problem, and if we get applications, then we have a full committee, and if we don't have full, you know, we don't have more than, I'd say, we need to have at least three people to have it be a committee, then if we don't get at least three applications, we know we have one extremely competent and willing volunteer, which is something, and we maybe have him in an advisory capacity. What do people think about that? Are you okay with that?
Great idea. We, you know, and it's not like we're setting a precedent. We did this with the Drainage Committee.
Yep.
Where it got its name changed.
Yes.
And if we don't get the committee, I would want to hear what this gentleman would have to say to advise us, where we're doing, you know, what's best for the town, what we think we're doing best for the town. This gentleman obviously knows more about the business than we do.
Yep, yep.
So why wouldn't we want to take his advice?
Yeah, okay. All right, so you guys are in agreement on that?
Yes.
All right, so Lynn, can you put a pin on that for the 21st? Did you have any other questions that you wanted to ask?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right, and thank you for your persistence. Ms. Sloan?
I just want to let you know, we do have a cable committee. Member one, his term ends June 30th.
That's what I had just asked Lynn, I wasn't sure whether that, what was going on with appointments and et cetera, et cetera. All right, so...
It was disbanded, though, in June of last year.
Yeah, we did take a vote to disband the committee.
It was disbanded.
In June of last year, so maybe that wasn't communicated, so we'll have to tick and tie that and make sure that we put a bow on it, and so we'll probably, just to throw another monkey wrench in the works, we'll probably vote to resuscitate the committee that you never knew was dead to begin with. So we'll just, you know, continue to add confusion.
But we'll add a, you know, we'll make it, give it a really cool name, like the Drainage Committee changed their name to whatever it was.
Think of a good name.
You know, this could be a really cool, you know...
So I hear you saying that you're gonna come up with a new name for the committee. That's what I heard.
No, I'll only take an under advisement.
Okay.
We create a subcommittee for the name of the subcommittee that we're gonna be creating.
Yeah, we'll have a naming committee. All right, that's great. Okay, and I'm sorry, Mrs. Santa Lucia, if you can say who you are and let us know your thoughts.
Sure, I'll be brief. Hi, I'm Teresa Santa Lucia, and I just wanted to come to add my support to WHCA. I wanted to talk about the, this on the capacity, past chair of the Historical Commission. For the 200th anniversary, we decided that we were gonna try to do some interviews with Hanson residents, and WHCA stepped up and really helped us professionalize that, they supported us, they gave us a wonderful platform, and those residents, which are real gems of history and some pearls of knowledge, are now posted on the Hanson Public Library website as well. So it's a really wonderful opportunity to see how the WHCA can work with town volunteers and other commissions in town to help bring together and produce some wonderful things for the town. That put us, COVID put a stop to us, but we are about to gear up and, and continue to do more of those interviews in the future. And then I just wanted to also say personally that WHCA has covered our, sorry, WHCA has covered our Christmas thing that my family has done at Red Acres for 67 years, and they have been there many of those years, and it's been wonderful to have them come and cover it and put that on cable. I've had many people say, you know, I was sick, I wasn't able to come, but I watched the whole thing on cable. And I think that's a really good indicator of how people, you know, for different circumstances, are able to sort of continue to be part of the community and utilize those services. So I just wanted to also mention that as a support, and I thank you for all your services that you've provided to the town. Thanks.
Thanks, Teresa. Yeah, I think, I think that that's an important piece, you know, you're finding more and more in the aftermath of COVID, people are feeling disconnected and isolated, and sometimes that connectivity, even if it's just through cable, of watching an event or a meeting or whatever it might be, does help people feel a little bit more connected. So that's, that's pretty powerful. Ma'am, I, yes, I saw you raise your hand. Did you wanna?
Sort of, I'm Judy Caldas, 87 Waldham Street. It was, there was just so much confusion as to, is there a committee? Is there not a committee? Why did he get appointed by or approved through that, and then they disbanded the committee, and no one told us?
I think we, I think we just figured out that there was, our office probably did, and I'm not saying that it was the people that are here, I'm not...
Right.
I'm trying to be neutral about that, but somehow, the communication did not happen.
I'm just gonna do a little history of the time called people and...
Yeah, somehow, the communication did not happen to the town clerk's office, so, but we will be meeting at our next meeting, which is the 21st, and we will be meeting to revive the committee that nobody knew was dead to begin with, and then we will be putting out an APB for applications, and hopefully we get a couple of people who, you know, are interested in it. So, um, okay, yes, Ms. Green.
How do you, am I able to speak?
Oh, please, feel free, yeah.
So I'm Lisa Green, Town Administrator for Hanson, but I'm a Whitman resident, and I just, again, would like to express my support for Whitman Hanson Cable Access. As you know, I organize a Halloween-themed car show that I've had four now, this is my fourth year doing it with, in partnership with Dollars for Scholars, and Whitman Hanson Cable Access, they send people out there to record basically the whole day, and they put together a great video about it that shows the cars, the people having a great time, they interview people, so it's a great, it's a, it's a great story, it's a great way to see the cars and people who have been cooped up can watch this and see what went on in their neighborhood and community, so my support for them as well, they do a great job with any of these type of events, with getting them on cable and, and out there so people can watch it over and over and over again.
Thank you, Ms. Green. And was there anybody else that wanted to get up and speak? Mr. Tachi, Ms. Diaz?
The only thing that I would ask is we're gonna have to, are we training the board is Whitman Hanson Community Access? And Kevin, Kenny started you saying cable, so I just want to make sure when you do the license, that it's Whitman Hanson Community Access.
I'm pretty sure tonight I said that we were being recorded by cable access.
Oh, you definitely did.
Yeah. And now that you've brought it to my attention, I undoubtedly will continue to repeat that error. It's like, okay, thank you. And you have mentioned that in the past, quite, quite politely, yes.
I'm gonna bring you a clip, put it in front of you to remind you.
Yes, please do that, that's, that would be amazing. And did Mr. Bouvet, did you want to say, share anything, sir, or?
A couple of us, you want me to go over?
Sure, yeah, please, yep.
I'll be official.
Very.
Okay. First, I have to observe that the meeting I actually show up for, the Selects meeting I actually show up for, my sister's not at.
She is under the weather tonight, sir.
Yes, I know.
I'm sorry.
We've already communicated.
Yeah, but that is ironic.
Yes. Been on the board since Whitman Community Access was founded, worked closely with Steve Roy and with our...
Go back to you on Cable, Hanson Cable Committee for Whitman Hanson Community Access.
That's true. That's true. I've been in broadcasting cable for 43 years in various capacities, and it's been a great joy to be part of the planning and organization and, and board participation for Whitman Community Access. Attorney, you touched on a couple of really important things that drive, the reason this organization exists, localism, community communication, democracy. These are all the reasons that we invest in community access television. I will say that, looking at it from a professional point of view and, and individually, the audience does migrate, people stream now, they, they take their information on different platforms, and so as this organization moves forward, supporting those platforms so that community information remains available to the audiences of both towns is very important and should be supported. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did, does any of you guys want to say anything?
I would just say that, I, I agree with everything that everybody's saying. I would just add in another, just one layer that touched, you know, my family personally. I, I talk about it frequently with these meetings. My kids right now are watching this meeting as they have done faithfully for years, honestly. And to Dr. Jocelyn's point, the reason why my, my oldest daughter, Elizabeth, who's at Dan's class right now, wanted to be part of the Student Council and was able to be on Student Council and enjoy it, was because of watching Cable Access and watching these videos and wanting to get involved in government and leadership. My third grader, Kennedy, is going into fourth grade, and she's already, she's probably watching this right now, wants to be in student government because of Whitman Hanson Cable Access, Community Access. So I think that, you know, not only is it helping connect people, because even going back to COVID, I, I relied on a lot of the, not just the meetings, but the bulletins that you guys had posted. Where's the next testing site? How, when should we be there? What are the hours of operation, things like that? So many invaluable things that people can rely on consistently have occurred because of WHCA. It's helped my kids want to be better leaders, better, more community involvement, it's made them ask questions, get to know their neighbors, and it's great to see them see their friends on TV during the reruns, see themselves on there and feel like they're part of a community that's actually invested in them. So you guys have done an amazing job, and from day one, every person, I know this is more on the staff, less on WHCA, but the staff from day one and the board have been nothing but warm and inviting, incredibly professional, and they really make you feel like you're the most important person in the room every single time you, you go there. It's one of the jewels that we actually have, and I fully support everything you guys have been able to do.
Yeah, and I, I, well said, Mr. White. And I, from prior to when I was on the Select Board, I did quite a bit of fundraising in town, and I could always count on Whitman Hanson Cable to help me get the message out about the organization or the event or whatever, and, you know, flawlessly. And lots of interviews with poor Mr. Tachi, who I tortured, you know, every interview, and Bob Hayes, and, you know, and, you know, and another thing that, and I'm hoping we get back to it this year, that we've fallen off a bit, and this definitely isn't because of Whitman Hanson Community Access, but, you know, the candidates debates and forums and things like that, so people can get to meet who the people are that are running, because, you know, you don't, nobody know, you know, like, maybe you know, like, I don't know, 50, 100 people in town, but not generally everybody knows the candidates, and you can find out a lot about people in those events, and it, it seems kind of hokey, but, you know, when you're in a town the size of Hanson, every vote counts. We have had, and, and, you know, Ms. Sloan can tell you, we've had, like, very narrow margins, people win, and so, you know, to, to be able to listen to the different positions people take on different issues and kind of make up your mind, oh, all right, I didn't know that person, I, you know what, I, I like their background, I, I like their thought process, I've never met them, but they seem like my kind of candidate. That's a wonderful opportunity. That's a wonderful opportunity, and it's one that, but for the fact that it's on cable, we really wouldn't have, you know, not a lot of people feel comfortable coming live to those types of events, or perhaps they might think that it might be boring and they have a better use of their time, but, but they'll watch it on replay. And you're right, Joe, about the kids watching cable. You know, I, I, Mike Jones one time told me that his kids watch, and, and he said, you swore last meeting, and I said, I said, I did? Well, it turned out I had said, damn. But I thought, oh, my word, I, you know, and so I, I said, okay, Mike, I'll clean up my act, I won't, you know. But so they are watching, and it's great that they're getting to see what the democratic process is and how the decisions are made. So I, I think it's a valuable resource, and that connectivity with the community, and even like, you know, because we're in a regional, you know, school district, so sometimes we might want to find out what's going on in Whitman. What did, what did the Whitman Selectmen talk about with regard to the region, you know, regional agreement? What's happening with their budget? Well, I don't have to sit through their meeting, I can just bring it up on cable, you know, whenever I'm, I'm free, and I can bring it up and watch it. So I, I really thank you for all of the years of dedication and connecting the community and highlighting resources and volunteers, and it's, it's so much of what makes our community a community. It's, you know, really is like part of the fabric. So I thank you. Mr. Hickey, did you have anything?
Yeah, well, now Joe's girls saw you swear.
Thank you.
Coincidentally, I've established a swear jar in the house.
I think, you know, quite a bit has been said, so, you know, the only thing I could add to it, to quote a movie, and I think Renee, the person that said it is Renee Zellweger, "You had me at hello." You know, it, it's pretty amazing, and I, I too have sat with Kevin, and he gets the best out of people when you don't think you have it. And, and very professional, and, and that's what I enjoyed, you know, about sitting. But with the personalities that you have, it's just, makes people feel welcome. And, you know, it, yeah, so you had me at hello.
Mr. Hill, did you have anything?
No, nothing. I kind of go along with everything everybody's, everybody's said. I don't want to keep going on, but I agree with everything.
Okay. Yep.
So there's been a tremendous amount of support. I haven't checked my emails since coming to the podium, but like I said, I got two more letters and a few others that you haven't heard from, who, who I've got in a folder here that I'll give you tonight. And my thought is, if you guys would be open to it, to maybe leave that open for a little bit longer since they're still coming in. I think people will see this meeting and say, oh, did I miss my chance? And I hope they didn't. I hope that they can still submit their support. We're going to be in the ascertainment window here for a while, so I'd like to see that, because I think, you know, we've served a lot of people, and it's just some of them, they only catch it on the replay, they don't always catch it live.
Yeah.
So that's what we'll try to capture with this. You know, so there's other, like I said, there's, at least since we started keeping tighter records on this, 200 other local nonprofits who we've served. In fact, there we have Paul with Lisa at the, at the car show, I think, last year. There's lots of different groups that we serve. Here's a quick list, you want to read them? There's a whole lot of people, whether this be just a bulletin board, or, or sitting down to a public service announcement, interviews, whatever it might be. Again, that's, that's over 200, and that's only since 2018. Departments and committees, I think that was 43 groups served, 23 departments and 18 boards and committees, again, just since 2018, when kind of the CRM was there and started taking, taking records on, on the different people that we work with. You see the numbers on the programming, I think you see it in the channel, but here they are boiled down. Ryan did all the, all the work, if you really want to drill in, there's a URL that you can go to to actually take a look at the list. But 412 government meetings just for Hanson since 2018. You can see how they boiled down, you guys are the winners with 196, because we're here about every other week, sometimes more often than that. I went backwards here, I went GEP instead of PEG, Peg Access, like they usually call it. Educational, 82 unique events, the way that we were keeping records on this, some of those are going to be more than one, so 82 could be, there could be 10, one of those numbers in 82 could have happened 10 years, and we've been filming it every year. So, but there's at least 82 unique events that we film from graduations, and you kind of see it bordering the side here. This was one of my favorites that I filmed, it was an art show, and while the art show happened in Rockland, it featured students from Whitman Hanson Regional High School. We're in the schools for, as the students come back and, and, you know, get to celebrate the, the school that they came from, and inspire a whole excitement with, with the younger students. Of course, graduation and all sorts of other local programming like you've heard people talk about. And then our public access, again, just since 2018, over 1,400 unique programs that have aired on, on our public access channel, you see some examples around the screen. You know, so these are our main three pillars, as I've said, the, well, actually, it's four pillars, because we've got public, educational, government Whitman, and government Hanson. As you mentioned, there's a really nice benefit here that you can tune into the Whitman stuff when it relates, and when you need to see that information, that's a nice benefit that, you know, some other neighboring communities, they don't, they don't have that. So that's a really nice thing. And there's just a tremendous amount of content that's added to WHCA all the time. So here we talk about the fact that, I think you all know kind of where it comes from, we just try to be on the pulse, but we also try to interface with local leadership, emergency services. And I kind of put this slide in here to give me a nice segue into something that's come up a couple of times, and that's coronavirus, COVID-19. This, this website that we put together, this is the mobile view of it, but being able to have the link right to the COVID page that went across the top of every single page on WHCA, that brought up up-to-date, up-to-date information about COVID-19, it brought you national or federal information, state information, and of course, the local. And that's not to mention anything about the unique style of coverage that had to happen for all of that unique coverage. As was mentioned by somebody tonight, there was a specialized bulletin board that aired all the time on this website, so even if there was programming on our channel, you could still go to the website and see if it was, what song am I supposed to be singing when I'm washing my hands? It was there 24/7, you could see it anytime. So lots of great information was there, we're really proud about that. So here's kind of some of what we did, you know, through COVID, and again, you guys all lived it, but for the record, I just kind of wanted to touch on it. You know, we facilitated a lot of monthly production of PSA, Public Service Announcements, so that organizations could come in and share that messaging as things changed very quickly. Things are very dynamic. We deployed four Zoom virtual meeting spaces and then started also developing the platform this, in this Jitsi meeting, which was, was a free service. So once we trained somebody, we could have infinite number of meetings, so we could serve, at first, we could serve four boards or committees simultaneously, boards, committees, and departments in the two towns, and once we put that in, it was, it was limitless. And we saw that. We saw those nights where I ran out of staff, didn't run out of meeting rooms, I ran out of people to go into them. So that training became really important. Faith-based institutions came to us, we still have churches that are now airing with us because of the introductions that were, well, they were introductions, but the relationships that were forged during COVID, and they stayed producing with us. And of course, as I mentioned in the previous slide, those unique events that we had to cover that we'd never covered before required us to buy some unique equipment that, that we're still seeing the benefits of today. Being able to go out and produce a live meeting from the middle of a football field with barely any cell phone service was something unthinkable, like five years ago.
Well, that, that's a good point. We, we won't forget the, the town meeting we had on a football field, I mean-
As the sun went down, and, you know, we're all sitting there trying to get it in, and a packed meeting, as much as it could be, according to what was allowed at the time. Of course, we couldn't pipe people in through cable, but people could still stay engaged. So there was some really unique pivots and things that happened with that. And, you know, we, we remain ready to stay dynamic and ready to pivot for whatever might come in the future. And with sufficient resources, which you've kind of heard about the need for tonight, we stand ready to continue to proudly fulfill our mission statement, which is to provide content and opportunities which inform, enlighten, and entertain members of the Whitman Hanson community through access to modern technology, equipment, facilities, and training. And that's sort of my presentation, just for the record, but I'm also happy to take any questions that you might have. That QR code and that link down the bottom to our website will get you to, to our homepage, and in the slider is more information about these license renewals. We've put together some web forms there, communications, if people have questions, people want to see other information, I think we're going to actually post the letters of support that we've gotten there so that people can take a look at them if they'd like to parody them for themselves. But other than that, happy to take any questions or comments if you have.
At the beginning, Eric, did you say that Ryan helped you put this together?
Ryan did all these, you see the URLs up the top here.
I feel like he is in every single picture that you put up.
You know, we, we hide this, I think, well, but we're, we're a small staff, you know?
Doing almost all of them.
This is all of us. And the fact that Ryan's so big up the top, Ryan and I are the two full timers right now.
And I actually think Amanda, Brian, and Gee were at the Hanson Day event.
Ryan was there as well, yeah.
Yep, and Ryan.
And then I was at another event in Brockton, trying to get new interns and folks that were sort of in school, maybe part-time employees, you know, because it's always, you know, the other thing too is that places like WHCA, because I've seen it in other communities, are great launchpads for careers. Somebody, it was my, Dr. Jocelyn mentioned it tonight. I had, when I was in Hingham before I was here, I had someone who is currently a meteorologist now, was one of my first members in Hingham.
Oh, wow.
And he did a show with us called Whether or Not, where he talked about doing the human interest stories that he then used in his portfolio to get hired. Because anybody can point to a green screen, and, well, I don't know if anybody can, but a lot of people can do the weather, but to be able to go and explain why lobster prices are what they are, or, you know, the corn crop for this year, was great. And so those opportunities are out there, and it's, I liken it to Michael Scott trying to market a blank piece of paper, you know? The opportunities are limitless. One of our other volunteers, Paul Creamy, does the world of art, he talked about that, just, just having that creative outlet and what you can make with it, and what you can inspire with it. So it's, it's really exciting stuff, and we're, we're very proud to be doing it.
Did anybody else have any other, now, you had mentioned you were hoping we could keep the hearing open?
I don't know that it's the hearing open, the bulletin advice to this, yeah.
Sure. Thank you. Well done. Eric is always-
Yes, William Sullivan, special counsel. You close the hearing, that's fine. The ascertainment process, as indicated by Lisa and Eric, is continuing, so I think it'd be fine to let people know here and on the website that they're free to submit letters of support or comments, you know, for weeks and months going forward.
So at what point, I mean, do we need to make a determination about when the ascertainment period would end, or?
You do, but that, that's a way off.
Okay.
The next step, just to take you to the next steps, and I'll give you a bullet point list of those, will be we'll do, finalizing the ascertainment, there's a capital plan, there's plans about high-definition channels, improving the standard definition to a higher grade video serial digital interface. So that will be part of a report.
Is that up your alley right there? Okay, yes.
That report that we'll be, we'll be putting together. And then you can do it different ways, but together with Lisa, myself, and Eric, and if there's other folks who'd be, like to assist, we can figure that out. We'll sit down with Kathy Maloney of Comcast, Government Affairs Manager I mentioned, and we'll go and negotiate the major issues. The license is up, as Lisa said, in 2025, you know, it's a way off, but that said, you know, what I think we'd like to do is move quickly and sit down with Comcast, you know, within two months certainly, and see if we can, you know, lay the groundwork for getting this done earlier rather than later. But throughout that time, the ascertainment period is open, and we can, you can put on your website that it's open, and let people know how they could submit hard copy or electronic letters of interest, of support or comments to further help in the negotiation process.
Do we have anything, Ms. Green, that talks about the timelines and the various components of this process?
I think there is in my scope. So what I'd be happy to do is for your next meeting, prepare two memos with Lisa. One would be, as the chair says, a timeline of the major tasks and the timeline, and that is actually in my scope that I submitted, but I'll update that for, make it board friendly. Now then, two, I'd be happy to put together a list of the types of tasks that cable committees can work on.
Okay.
So for your meeting, you can see those tasks and decide which ones seem most appropriate for, for Hanson.
That would be helpful, because, you know, you've heard the conversation about the cable committee, and then I also want to, it seems to me that there might be some pitfalls for the unwary, and I want to make sure that we're hitting each one of the benchmarks that we need to hit in the time that we need to hit them.
Yeah, and we will.
Okay.
And Lisa and I have discussed those, and, but, but certainly, you're, you're the issuing authority under the Cable Act and state cable law, and we want to make sure that we're all, all on the same page. And finally, it's, it's, it's an honor and a pleasure being here tonight. I'll also be able to tell my kids that, you know, when you have a job you love, it, it is always something new. And in 30 years of cable work, it's the first time a board or committee has discussed resuscitating and exhuming. And I'll let, I'll let the kids know that we have two words of the day for, for the rest of the weekend. But seriously, it's, it's, the board's fabulous, the town has done a wonderful job, as the access does, and it's just a real pleasure to be here, and I thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. So, oh, oh, yes, sir. Yeah.
Does the current contract or future contract allow, or let's use Brockton as an example, right now they're Comcast, but you've got Verizon, Fios, that's going to be gone. Is that allowed once the contract is in place currently or in the future? I'd be very grateful.
Good question. The, the current license and the next license are all non-exclusive. The state law requires they be non-exclusive. The challenge in cable is that there aren't, until the internet came along with telephone, the economics of overbuilding didn't work. If there was one company, it wasn't in the financial interest of the other company to, to build. That changed when internet and cable came along with that triple play, there were more revenues. And of course, Verizon went into Fios because it felt it needed to have the, the video portion together with its hardline phones and its wireless phones. But they're, they have not, they, they're out of the, the cable business in terms of new towns and cities for about eight or nine or 10 years, and they're not building any more Fios systems.
So I saw in the article in the trade magazine that, one, they are, and, two, I've been doing cable, or was a cable guy back in '82, so I know how the contract stuff works. And what I really would like, for us to build our own or build our, build one with, with Whitman.
So where, so I guess, so it isn't exclusive, you're saying?
Non-exclusive, yeah.
Yeah.
But Verizon really is out of the business. I mean, they built like internet-type system, but they, they, they're not even necessarily going to be renewed, they said to Wall Street, they're not going to continue cable, even, fill it for it, where they are. That said, the, the separate issue, not for here and not on the agenda, but just to mention at a separate time, is the issue of a town building its own fiber to the home. Actually, my wife is the town administrator in Leverett, Massachusetts, which is the first town that did that in Massachusetts. So it's, it's a lot easier to do in a town that doesn't have any broadband, Leverett or where I live. Very possible if there's two companies, where there's one company, it's a, it's, it's a big project. That for another day, but, but that's something that towns sometimes look at, not easy, but towns certainly can look at that if it thinks it's, it's a project.
But I think, to your point, it wouldn't be off the table, because this contract won't be exclusive.
That's right, exactly.
No, that's what I wanted to make sure that, I mean, the article I saw was in a trade magazine, maybe last month, where they were going to start building new systems, and one of them was supposed to be Brock. So I just-
I should say, I, I did a license, and there, there is a company that built, just is building out cable systems, it had been American Cable, I just did the license for Haverhill. Now, they're, they're not in this area, but I'd be happy to reach out to them and find out if they're ever interested in coming south of Boston. We have two great towns, Breeze Line, for, for Breeze Line, like the sixth largest company, I think, in the country to come to, and I'd be happy to reach out, reach out to them. But as the chair says, not exclusive, this license doesn't prevent it. And I would add that in drafting the license and negotiating the license, I make sure that there are not provisions in that license that would tie the hands of a town if it sought to go out, just like we make sure that this is a cable license that deals with cable service. And just that the cable company wants to make sure that this license doesn't regulate their internet service, we want to make sure that this license doesn't provide rights to a cable company if and when in the distant future they were to cease providing cable, that there's nothing in this license that gives them any right in the- I should say, I did a license, and there is a company that built, just is building out cable systems. It had been American Cable. I just did the license for Haverhill. Now, they're, they're not in this area, but I'd be happy to reach out to them and find out if they're ever interested in coming south of Boston. We have two great towns, Breeze Line, for Breeze Line, like the sixth largest company, I think, in the country to come to, and I'd be happy to reach out, reach out to them. But as the chair says, not exclusive, this license doesn't prevent it. And I would add that in drafting the license and negotiating the license, I make sure that there are not provisions in that license that would tie the hands of a town if it sought to go out, just like we make sure that this is a cable license that deals with cable service. And just as the cable company wants to make sure that this license doesn't regulate their internet service, we want to make sure that this license doesn't provide rights to a cable company if and when in the distant future they were to cease providing cable, that there's nothing in this license that gives them any right in the future. So I pay special attention to making sure, as the cable company does, that this cable license only addresses cable and not other services, including broadband.
Well, I think it's good news that that, that it isn't exclusive because we've got the more immediate task of getting, you know, of continuing into that contract and making sure we've got favorable terms for Hanson and all that. But it won't preclude us from, on a long-term basis, exploring what other alternatives might be out there.
Exactly. And very wise. Job number one is to get a good license here with an excellent company and an excellent government affairs manager, and that's task number one. And we won't take our eyes off of that, even if there are other things for the town to think about. The most important thing is to put together a license here that works for the town, the residents, the businesses, and of course, works for Comcast, so we can come together on it.
Okay, great. That's, that's, that's great. Thank you. Is that responsive to?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure the contract was not something exclusive.
Yep.
And it'd be the option for, you know, other services, yes.
Yep. Okay, great. Any other comments or questions? Okay, then, oh, oh.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, please don't apologize. Yeah.
When do we start actually making suggestions?
Well, he's going to put together the timeline for us.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is early in the process, it's 2025, but we'd like to see if we could, you know, move it ahead so we get, potentially get it done, you know.
Okay, so then you wouldn't actually want me to hear tonight that the population in Hanson in the past 10 years has only gone up about 600 people, but the demographics in Hanson has changed dramatically, where 40% of the people that live in Hanson are 60 and older, so they're either retired or preparing to retire. You don't want to hear that tonight, you want to hear it when we're ready to do.
Okay. We'll be able to put that together in a way that we can have a cycle of negotiations.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I've lost control of the hearing here. Okay, so with that, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Take care.
And we're just going to take a moment and then we'll move on to our next agenda item because.
Thanks, guys. Take care.
I think the few hale and hearty people we have in our audience might be abandoning us.
Yeah. Knocked out. Not till one more.
All right. So, thank you, guys. Take care, and thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to our request from Town Clerk to approve early voting hours. And in your packet, you will see a copy of a letter addressed to Ms. Fitzgerald Kemmet, which is me, but I'm so used to my name being butchered, it's not even funny. All right, so at the January 10th meeting of Board of Registars, a vote of 3-0 to recommend that the Select Board vote to hold in-person early voting for the annual Hanson Town election for three days of early voting at the Hanson Town Clerk's office. This vote is required in order to hold in-person early voting for a local election under the election reform titled the Votes Act, which was signed into law on June 22, 2022. And so I need somebody to make the motion that is in the letter. Okay, great.
I'd like to make a motion to hold in-person early voting for the May 20th annual town election to be held at the Town Clerk's office for three days as follows. Monday, May 15, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Tuesday, May 16, from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Wednesday, May 17, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Certainly. Okay. Any questions? Because we've got Ms. Sloan here. Okay, all in favor. All right, great. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay. All right, moving right along. We've got the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Agreement and Budget. And I know there was a meeting last evening, I believe, that Mr. Hickey and Ms. Green attended. Did, did you want to give, who wants to give the update?
You want me to go? Okay. We've actually met every Monday night, once it started, once the holidays were over. Last night, we just finished going through the, the big seven, I would call them, you know, including leasing, busing, statutory method. Right now, it seems like a good roundtable of discussion. What Chris is looking to do, Chris Young is the, I mean, Chris Howard is the chair of this committee, and he's putting together the language so that we can bring it back here. The Finance Committee will also have it, and just kind of go through all the situations that we've come up with. Excuse me, one of the, you know, I don't want to call it a sticking point, one of the major concerns is the, the number of school committee members, where they have six, we have four. It's been talked about to make all votes two-thirds. I had actually made the statement at one of those meetings that one of the problems, and evidently it's only happened once, but towns voting with the way they think their town should be, and I said that was wrong. A school committee member should vote what is best for the district first, and what is best for the students and faculty, and not, you know, bring their town into it. And that was my concept of the two-thirds vote. Another thing that we discuss, which we'll have to go into more discussion, is the busing. They're not doing it by student, they're doing it by mile, which gets the district back more money. But because Hanson is bigger than Whitman, it will cost Hanson more money. So these are just some of the things that we're trying to work out.
So, I mean, I agree with the two-thirds concept, and I think the board generally would agree with it. And I'm not 100% sure that that's a true statement, that that was the only vote, but of course, we'd have to go back historically, and nobody's got time to do that.
Exactly.
But I do just, like, have a recollection of other times that it happened, but I'm not going to go back and, you know, forensically look at all of the school committee votes.
Right.
Okay, so, so it sounds like, you know, there's some disagreement, but everybody's being cordial.
Oh, absolutely. It's, and Lisa will tell you, I think she'll back me up on this, that it has been very cordial, but it's almost like a, you know, a circle-type thing where if you have an opinion, you say it. Like, it actually took us a part of one meeting and then last night to actually decide how much is going to be the insurance. It went from $5,000 to $10,000, you know, because the agreement is 32 years old. And when we had it in 2017, we never changed that. It just makes more sense.
So when something in the school breaks, what do we, what part of it, when do they come to us versus?
Right. They basically doubled the amount from five to 10, which makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Frank Lyman actually did the math at a meeting. I guess there's an app that you can do. And since 1992, inflation has gone up 117%. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. But it's really a good, a good group.
Good. I'm glad to hear that.
What were the cons to the, to the two-thirds vote? Because I think it's a great idea, aside from just them saying that it's just one, one time.
And, you know, yeah, and I mean, I basically made it so that it was easy, everything, any vote that would come up, would come up, would have to be two-thirds, just to make it easy across the board. When we do get to a final agreement, Desi will have to okay.
But that's a permissible method, though.
Absolutely.
Okay, and but to Joe's point, so I think what he, what I'd be curious is, what's the downside to Whitman of implementing the two-thirds? Okay, so it only happened one, let's say that that's a valid point, that it only happened one time, which again.
There's the, there's the elephant.
Well, no, the reason why I'm asking that is because I don't know where I either read it or heard it or something, but there were, there were questions brought up about how would it affect the quorum, would it affect the ability for, if people missed a meeting, could you make it? I totally forget where I heard that or saw that. Was any of that stuff brought up, or am I just thinking?
Yes, you may have actually seen the meeting.
Okay.
From.
It was something, yeah.
Community access television.
There you go.
Okay.
But that was discussed. And I would hope, obviously, Anne is sick tonight, but on important meetings where we have things to discuss, I'd be disappointed if all five of us weren't here. So if it's that important of a vote, I would be disappointed if my representative to the school committee did not show up.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
But that will have to be worked out, you know, you're right.
No, it's fine. I just wanted to make sure I, I couldn't remember where I heard it. So, but were there any other, was there any pushback to that? Because I think it's a brilliant idea. I think it's great.
Uh, we had some pushback. It was in the paper already.
Oh, okay.
With the two-thirds. I'm hoping that the, I don't really, if it was a real vote or just a discussion of it, but I'm hoping the Whitman Selectmen will, you know, kind of look at it again for the benefit of the district.
Yeah.
And I think just as a show of partnership, because I think that if anybody puts their, themselves in the place of the Hanson taxpayers, they could see that it was a difficult pill to swallow. And, and we have swallowed it, but we're just looking for, you know, just an acknowledgement and, and some equal feeling as though the playing field is level, and that if there were ever to be something where people might vote along the lines of, because of their town, and even like, say, bussings, like another example, that's a perfect example, where, you know, you're going to see shifting sands as, you know, where one town might be disadvantaged and the other town is going to gain the advantage, that's a perfect example where two-thirds vote would, would, you know, instead of along the lines of the, and I'm not suggesting, you know, look, do I think that the school committee guys show up to the meetings and say, I'm only going to vote for what's good for my town? I don't think, you know, 99% of the time, and 99% of them do that. But that two-thirds just eliminates any doubt. It just eliminates the doubt. So I love it. Mr. Hill?
Yeah, the two-thirds basically means seven, right?
Yes.
Because you can't get six and a, however, six and a third, or six and six tenths, or however. So basically, it's the seven people. And the, the vote you're talking about was, was about this, right? The statutory, the.
Yes.
That's the one that you're talking about.
And that's the most recent one, and that's what we all look at. But according to Desi, that can happen, and it did happen. There's nothing, it's like this board, you know, we're trying to, and I'm not going to be diplomatic about it, mistakes have made, been made in the past. Even this board with, obviously, you know.
Cable.
Yeah, with the cable committee. But we're trying to fix for people that take our places in the future. And that is one of the things with this committee, because, and I think everybody agreed on it, we'll end up with, at the Select Board's meeting in September of the, of the third year, that someone needs to be put on the Regional District Agreement Committee just to review.
Yep.
And it could take one meeting, it could take two, it might just be emails going back and forth, everything is fine. But I wanted to make sure, because one of the things was, oh, no, it says right here, they're supposed to meet every five years. Well, why did it take 32 years to get to the point where we're out? So this is going to hold the school and both towns responsible to make sure it's looked at every three years.
Yes. Because with this turnover, all the way around, the, the school committee, the board, everybody, so you got to have, you have to have the checks and balances in place to make sure that when we're long gone and those guys are long gone, that the process is going to supersede, you know?
And it's going to take, you know, like, we know Frank's going to be gone, we know I'm going to be gone, but the process is not going to start three years from today.
Right, right.
It's going to start three years from when the contract, you know, when, when the commissioner finally signs it, and that will be the last person to sign it, it's three years from then.
Okay.
So it's possible none of us would be.
Could be four years, you know, from today or whatever. Okay, all right, that's helpful. Thanks, Jim. Did you have anything else you wanted to mention, Ms. Green?
No, just, it's, it's, it's very good dialogue and conversation, and just also pointing out the areas that could lead to confusion, especially capital costs, what's an emergency cost, and then just making sure language in the agreement, it corresponds and is consistent with language in leases, because it's very, it's very easy to have language in a lease, because the lease also deals with capital costs as well. But then all of a sudden, it's in the agreement, too. It's very easy to miss or put language in that might make it either ambiguous or confusing. So it's good that, there's lots of eyes on these that are focusing on these, these matters that we want to make sure, once the agreement's final, that everything is harmonious together, and there's not areas that are inconsistent or in contrary to what we just did with the agreement. So.
Okay.
Very good committee.
And we also had on this agenda item Whitman-Hanson Regional School District Budget. Any updates on that, or?
The only update is that the committee, I believe, will be voting on their budget on the February 15 meeting. All that, that agenda has not come out yet.
Okay.
But if memory serves, that's what they had meant, that mentioned at the, their last meeting, but we'll wait for the agenda to come out to confirm that.
Okay, all right. Anything else on that item? All right, then we're going to move on to discuss draft fraud risk policy. So as you recall, Lisa had presented it to us a couple of meetings ago, and then we had a discussion about including our Town Accountant, Eric Kersnoff's comments. Lisa did that, and the policy that we have in our packet has been updated. Did you want to point out some of the changes that were made? I don't know if we got a redlined version. I didn't see one, but.
So the, our Town Accountant, Eric, had suggested that we add in here what an employee can do if they suspect fraud. So under the General Policy and Responsibility section on page three, that does start information on what an employee can do if they're not sure. They can reach out to either the department head, or if they suspect the department head may be contributing to the fraud or committing, then they can reach out to the town administrator or possibly a town official.
Okay.
For that. Also, too, there is information that expands the whistleblower protection. So you'll see that in Section Six, on, under Procedures, Section Six on Page Five, but then also on Page Six, there's also a whistleblower policy as well. And that is what our auditors for our, for ARPA were looking for. So we will have it in this, and if this is adopted, I will send a copy of this to the ARPA auditors.
Let me ask you this, Ms. Green. Do you think this might be an opportunity for us to do a training on this new policy with all employees? And, because I really think it's important that we highlight it. You know, it's great if we have a policy, but if nobody knows about it, and if we're not active about implementing it and communicating it, then we might as well just put it on the shelf and let it gather dust. So I'm wondering, and we might even think about maybe combining this with like an ethics training, too, like kind of do a, you know, a combined training, just a refresher.
What do you mean, like by training? Do you mean?
I mean, have like either Lisa or Kate conduct a training class in the Select Board meeting. We've done this years, years ago, we did one on open meeting law violations, I think, or I don't, I don't remember. But we did, we've done a couple of them, but it's been quite a while. We haven't done anything since pre-COVID. And it seems to me this is a new policy. We've got enough new employees, and even existing employees, since this is a new policy, we want to tell people what the chain of command is. If you see something, say something, here's who you need to say it to. Because, like I said, the policy is worth nothing if we don't communicate it and educate people about it. I would like to think that this is common sense, but it might not be. And, you know, and it may be a bit of a cultural change, you know, for the better. And so I just think it's important that we really, you know, that they're hearing it from leadership, you know, that you're meeting with your department heads about it, that you're doing some training, maybe within conjunction with the department heads, maybe have Kate come. I don't know what that looks like. I'll leave that up to you, how the sausage is made. But I just think it would be good to do some training on it.
So actually, on that note, I did talk with Eric Kinter today, our interim Town Accountant, to talk about what, what could lead to fraud. You know, people will see this policy, but have really not know. You know, people will see this policy, but have really don't not know, I don't know what that, you know, what does that mean? Is it, is it only people taking money out of the register and putting it in their pocket or is it other, I, you know, other issues or other activities? So we did talk about putting together a list of, and examples of what fraud could be. So I did speak with that and I have spoken with our town council to do some, um, training as far as, um, minutes, agendas, and we can add ethics and, and fraud, so.
I mean, and I'm not saying it has to all be in one class. Maybe you do a little series of classes on, um, here's what, um, you know, here's what minutes need to include.
Mm-hmm.
Here's what agendas need to include. Here's when they need to be posted so that we're not violating open meeting laws. Um, and, you know, then this and some ethics, whatever that looks like. But I, I think it would be great if you could say maybe every quarter have some little training.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, if, if we have a budget, maybe offer bagels or something to make it a little bit of a team building exercise. Um, and, and, you know, but like I said, I'll leave it up to you to figure out the logistics on that, but, um.
Already in the works.
Okay, awesome. And, and, and again, this doesn't always have to be you. For instance, this might be a class that we leverage Eric in conducting. And he maybe can tell examples of things he's seen or his experience, or maybe you have him come in as a guest speaker. You know, shake it up and keep it a little bit interesting, so. Um, did anybody have any questions on the policy? Mr. Weeks?
Um, so seven, uh, page five.
Page five.
Under media issues.
Mm-hmm.
Says any town employee or elected official contacted by the media with respect to an alleged fraud investigation should refer the media to the town administrator. Alleged fraud or audit investigation should not be discussed with the, with the media by any person other than the town administrator. How, how do we enforce that? Cause we're talking about elected officials. How, how would you, how would you prevent an elected official from doing things that they, you know, from basically.
I mean, they're a citizen. There's, there's, they're not an, they're, well, I mean, they are considered employee under the ethics training. Um, but, but I see what you're saying. They're a free agent in a way and, and, you know, they're.
Yeah, like how would we enforce a policy?
This needs to go to all elected officials.
Yeah, but what happens if they just say, I'm not signing it?
He's saying, what's the, what's the, what are the consequences if they don't follow this?
And what, what may make me, I guess what I'm trying to get at is like, what would make me sign this? So if I just, if I decide to just run for, you know, elected office, you know, the you, you might have some, some teeth on this when it comes to appointed folks maybe? Because they're, they're appointed to it, but in elect, but I'm, I'm looking at it. What's, the reason why I'm looking at this one specifically is because this is the only one that I've seen that speaks to any town employee or elected official. Everything else talks about, um, town employees. They don't make reference to, aside from like town elected officials. There's no section here that calls out elected officials specifically.
Was, did we lift that from somewhere else or did we intentionally put in elected official?
Well, yeah, that, so this was taken from an, a sample of, of what other towns had. Um, and the only, the only, um, so the only reasoning that I can see that they include elected officials in this is maybe just to bring, um, an awareness that if you were to speak to, you know, if we do have a, uh, alleged fraud investigation that's, that's happening and you do speak to, to the media, um, unknow, you speak with them, but unknowingly you could be sabotaging or even jeopardizing the investigation.
Well, I think also, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. I mean, inherent in, and people just ad libbing and speaking to the media about things shooting from the hip without maybe knowing what the consequences are. It's, it's going to bring, potentially bring more risk to the town. Um, if things are not stated in, in a proper way, um, if, you know, could be, you know, it could be interpreted as slander or whatever, um, you know, so I, I appreciate the effort to, um, try to mitigate the risk there. Um, I mean, but to Joe's point, I don't just, I really just, I mean, what, you know, an elected official, we've got no control over an elected official. Let's say it's somebody, you know, on, I don't know, but like the housing authority or water commission and, you know, they, they're talking about fraud or what, I mean, what, they're, they're totally separate. And I intentionally picked those two because they're not under sort of the town hall purview. Um, they're totally separate. I mean, they have separate, you know, duties.
I can, um, I, I can ask town, I'll ask town council to review this and, and get their thoughts on it and, and their, their, um, suggestions. They may suggest, oh, you know, just remove the elected officials from the policy. Or they might have a different eye, different way of, of wording it. Um, I'll cer- I, I certainly have them.
I mean, I, I think to Joe's point, I, I think we could have, we can have, so when people get elected, you know, Beth gives them the little, the little packet. Um, and we can certainly say, our preference, and we've got a reason for this, is if you're elected and there's any kind of fraud, we would really like to try to make sure that we're controlling the message and that the right people are aware that there's fraud. And so for that reason, we wanna make sure that the town administrator is front and center. I think we can say that, but this is saying something a little bit stronger.
Really? Okay.
Yeah, you don't think?
I just, I just look at, when I read it this the first time, I, I, I see employee, employee, employee. And as far as, when I see the word employee, I think us.
We are under ethics. We are an employee.
And I, I think I'm, I'm applying that to this.
Yeah.
Almost every line, you know, we can't skim off the top. We can't do this. We can't, every, every single thing applies to us, really.
Well, okay, so that's a fair, excellent point actually, uh, Mr. Hill. So I'm wondering, Lisa, if it might not be that we need to, you do have definitions.
Can I, yeah, I was gonna say, I just finished what I was trying to say at the beginning of this, so.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, the definitions piece needs to define what a town employee is.
There you go.
So you know that, but also I'm, I'm curious that if you go back and you talk about elected official. Even, even if I were to say, you know, you could hand this to me and I, as an elected official, as a planning board, for example. And say, I'm not gonna sign it. What, what can we, I, I'd like to go back to, at least if we can and say, okay, then what can we do? Because the only, the only consequence that I could see, cause you can't stop somebody from getting sworn in.
No.
If they don't wanna sign this. They can do whatever they want. Um, I think anyways, unless we hear from Kate something else. But, but does this get tied into like the, the recall law at that point? Because we have that as a, so if you, if you do, if you sign this and then you go and talk to the media about something, does that capture that?
I don't think so, because if you read the recall law, it, you real, you have to be convicted or you, yeah, 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 so.
It has to be.
But, but I'm, I'm thinking about it a different way. I'm trying, the ethics, what, when we, when you're elected, you have to acknowledge reading the policy. You don't have to, like, which, and, and I may be, you know, like, um, I may be kind of drawing a fine line on this, but is, are we asking people to acknowledge reading the policy and understanding it? Or are we asking them to say they're going to comply with it? And I know that might seem like, you know, an odd question, but I.
It's, it's important though.
I think it is important.
I'm not trying to make a mountain out of it, but it's just, this is just one of those things, it's like you, you shall, you shall refer the, well, if you say that, I can just say, well, no, I'm not, but then what are you gonna do?
So.
I'm just curious.
Where do they have to sign it?
On the very back of this.
That's us signing it, isn't it?
Oh, is it?
That's us signing it.
That's us.
Oh, that's us. Yeah, you're right.
We're not asking the employee to sign it. We're just asking that the knowledge that they've received it.
I, I think that the passage that Beth gives them would just have this too. And you'd just say, acknowledge that you got all the sexual harassment, the ethics stuff, and then the fraud prevention policy. Just acknowledge that. Are you okay with that?
Well, I, I, my questions still remain. I'd like to figure it out, because I just don't know what, I mean, it'd be like, okay, great, just file that away and.
I mean, you're not saying, you're not disagreeing that we would still want an elected official, like in an ideal world.
No, I think this is incredibly important. I just, I just, like, if you're gonna say you shall not do something, you shall do something, well, what happens if I don't? Cause the whole point of putting it in here is obviously because you're trying to create a system in which something is following.
Isn't telling an employee that if an employee sees something and they don't do something, they're gonna get fired, right?
I think that's the important distinction there, is that for an employee, this is a requirement. There's no, you know, gee, you, you, we, but to your point, Joe, we can't, um, somebody who is not paid by the town to do a job, so for the definition of employee, because we are considered municipal employees.
Yeah.
Um.
As long as we're okay with.
Yeah.
Alleged fraud or audit investigation shall not be discussed with any, with the media by any person other than the town administrator. As long as you're okay with that being in there and not being followed, it's fine.
I'm fine with it. Cause that is our policy. That's our preference. It's our policy.
Yeah.
I'm fine with it.
No, I just wanted to bring it up.
Does anybody have any? Okay, so, um, are you okay enough for us to take a vote on it?
Yeah, I just, no, it's, it's fine.
Changes?
Well, I do think that we, in the definitions, you should have.
We do need to have this, yeah.
I will make sure that it's added.
So I will entertain a motion to approve the fraud prevention policy with the addition of a definition for how an employee is defined. And for the purposes of our conversation, we all generally acknowledge that employee as defined under the State of Massachusetts Ethics Commission, which would include any municipal employee, whether paid or not. I will entertain a motion.
That's the whole motion?
Yeah.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, great. Um, I was hoping nobody was gonna ask questions because I couldn't repeat it. Um, okay, um, accept Patty Norton's resignation as a member of Hanson Historic Commission, Hanson Community Preservation Commission. Well, we can certainly discuss that, but I do want to say as a preliminary matter that Mrs. Norton and Mr. Norton are the epitome of, um, community-minded people. The hours that they have both individually put in on the various committees, whether it's capital improvement, Ca- Hanson Historic and Hanson Community Preservation, where I had the pleasure of serving with Patty for a number of years. She was the vice chair and I was the chair. Um, she was one of the original founding members of the Hanson Community Preservation Committee. And, uh, her passion and her knowledge and her husband John's passion and knowledge, um, have not gone unnoticed. And I just wanted to make that comment before we have a conversation about the resignation. So I will entertain a motion.
So moved with regret. They are amazing people. Second with regrets.
Um, so we wish Patty, um, the best of luck. All in favor? Okay, and then we had a two thousand twenty-three annual licensing, um, for Auto Express. But in your packet is a letter, and I am gonna read it out loud because I think it's important, um, from, uh, Mr. Glass. Dear Hanson Select Board, and it's dated today. In regards to Auto Express located at one sixty-nine Franklin Street, I would not recommend the issuance of a business license due to the following reasons. I visited Auto Express on December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two and again on January ninth, two thousand twenty-three. To verify compliance, Auto Express has been permitted for a twenty-car sales lot. At the time of my visit, there were forty-nine visit, forty-nine vehicles, rather. Most of which were in disrepair or just parts of cars and they vastly outnumbered those that were for sale. This has been an ongoing matter and the owners continue to collect, um, I think he means derelict vehicles, but, um, with the intentions to repair them. This property resembles more of a junkyard than a sales lot and we continue to receive complaints from citizens stating this. So, um, I know you recall, Mr. Hickey, they have been an ongoing problem. And in other ti- other points in time, we did not renew their license. Now, this board is in support of small business and we want to support small businesses doing business in Hanson and thriving in Hanson. But they must comply with the regulations. And when our building inspector is saying that it's egregious of forty-nine vehicles versus the twenty that they've got the, you know, license for, I just wanna call attention to the fact that, that, that the reason that the number of cars is important is this is how we get our money, our taxes, the fees from this business. And after all, that is what the town looks to each business and each citizen for. Um, that's how we run things. Um, so, um, I, I, Ms. Green, am, um, I know we're not, I think we're probably not gonna vote to, um, you know, to, uh, renew the license. My concern is what are we going to do about getting this guy to comply? It is a, it, it really is quite an eyesore when you go by there. I mean, it's, it's very distracting. Um, to see all the, there's always activity at all hours of the night and it, and like Carrie said, it does, it, it's, um, parts of bodies of cars and stuff like that. What is Mr. Glass gonna do to get this operation in compliance?
Well, we, we can send a letter to him, um, to the owner to let them know the board's decision, um, and.
But how do we know he's not gonna just keep selling stuff even if we don't renew the license?
Well, if our building inspector goes out there and sees him selling, we have our town council write a cease and desist letter and fine him. Um, basically for operating without a license, um, just as we would any other business that requires.
Wouldn't we do the cease and desist before we, wouldn't we, based on what Carrie's saying? Wouldn't we do a cease and desist and say?
Tomorrow.
You need to get it into compliance and then we'll talk about issuing you the license?
Yes, we do, um, so let's, I'll, um, revamp my, the timeline. So we'll, we'll do a letter with a cease and desist of operation. Um, due to the fact that he is not compliant with the rules and regulations of the town. Um, and the board has not, has voted not to renew his license. Um, and.
I don't know if we've voted yet. I was just, yeah, we haven't done that yet.
I'm just summarizing that, that's, you know, if the board were to go that direction, that's what our, um, the letter, the cease and des- this letter. And then we can also have, um, we can have a hearing and invite him before the board so that we could talk about these issues, um, and hear what he is planning to do to bring his property up to compliance and.
We've done that before with this gentleman.
We did that before with this gentleman.
And did he bring it up at that time? Did, is he the type that, did he, or did he just not do it?
He did bring it into sufficient compliance for our, uh, then, uh, building inspector, Mr. Curran, felt, um, satisfied. Um, I, you know, Mr. Weeks?
Um, so just for my, for myself, um, for, for Mr. Glass, didn't, didn't we have him come in here and he discussed two properties that had stuff out in front of their.
Yeah, I wanna talk to Lisa, yeah.
Yeah, and he made recommendations based off of that and then he sent letters and then had conversations. He referenced a couple of, um, bylaws and laws.
Yes.
That we could utilize. Wouldn't that be the process that we would take on this?
Mm-hmm.
We would just do that?
Yep.
Cause the, the most important thing is keeping everything consistent.
Yes.
Across the board. So if the bo- if the board decides to not go with granting this, it puts them in the same category as those other.
No, you're right. If he's saying this resembles more of a junkyard than a, than a sales lot, then cite him for the, for the fact that he's not complying with, with the, you know, um, junk.
Yeah, I'm just more apt to go with the recommendation of Mr. Glass based off of what he's seen and done in his capacity. So if we can, we just, we would decide what we're gonna do here. And then the decision here would determine whether or not we would bring in Mr. Glass to make further recommendations.
So does anybody feel prone to voting to renew this license?
I, I, I don't.
Okay.
But is there a way that when we do, if we ever do come back to doing it, that we can say maximum twenty vehicles on the property instead of for sale on the property? And that, you know what I mean? So this basically, he's, this is legal. As far, the other twenty-nine are, are broken down cars, which is different, but he's selling twenty cars, but, I mean, as far as.
Ed, you're right. And when we did this before, um, you know, he brought it back down to the twenty vehicles.
Yeah.
And then one car came in and then two.
Yeah.
And now it's an eyesore and neighbors are complaining.
Yeah, we're gonna start at twenty-one.
The problem is all the red tape. Um, and, and I think what Joe was bringing up was the site at the old JJ's Pub.
Yes.
Which is an eyesore and it's not supposed to be there.
Yep.
But, and I don't know what the fines are, but if it, you know, we had the dog hearing and the fine is continuously twenty-five dollars and then it might go up to fifty and that's the max. Um, the fines just aren't big enough. They're not.
They're not a deterrent.
No.
No. So, so Ms. Green, I think, um, when, I, I, I think what I'm hearing is we've got to have another conversation with Mr. Glass. And when we have that conversation, I very much would like to get an update on where we are with the other properties that we already discussed and we voted on. We haven't heard anything. I, I know there was some legal red tape. I know he had to talk to legal counsel, blah, blah, blah. That was the last time I talked to him, probably just around Christmas or so. Um, Mr. Weeks?
No, my, my, it's just my personal two cents on this is that, you know, we have him in this capacity for a reason. He's making, it, it's a, it's a, it's a important statement to make and especially in writing that you wanna, you know, not renew someone's license, right? So obviously it's a big deal. This is the recommendation he's making. I say we, we have a process. We determine what we're gonna do here and then we work on the recommendation that Mr. Glass gives us if he wants to. on the recommendation that Mr. Glass gives us if he wants to recommend to us that we take it a diff-
To the next step.
Whatever that next I don't think I I might I'm still trying to figure out some of this stuff. So for me, I don't know whether it it's I don't wanna defer responsibility to him, but if it is his responsibility, he should be making recommendations to us if that's the proper
It's probably our responsibility, but under his advi- with his advice.
Yeah, so we
So I think that's why I think we need to hear from him.
Yeah, let's bring him.
So I will entertain a motion not to renew, uh, Auto Express's, um, business license.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? Okay, great. And then Ms. Green, um, and Ms. McDowell, if you could just make sure that we have Mr. Glass at our next meeting, um, to tell us what he thinks the next steps are with this property and then give us a follow-up on the other properties. Okay, any further discussion on that? All right. Um, and now I have lost my agenda, so this is gonna be great. Um, okay, thank you. Um, okay, appoint Charlie Baker as a member of the Highway Building Committee. Ms. Green.
Yes, um, I'm chair, vice chair, members of the board. So, um, during a discussion regarding the Highway Building Committee, um, where we spoke of the number of members, um, and actually there were not enough members to actually hold a meeting. Uh, there's currently three members, two are Hanson residents, um, and one is not, which does not allow for the committee to meet, basically. Um, Mr. Baker said, I'd like to be on the committee, filled out a an application, and he is before you, um, to be hopefully appointed.
And I think that makes a lot of sense because he likely will have some role in taking care of this building
Yes, he will.
And and all of that, and I, you know, we all hold him in the highest of esteem, and I thank him for stepping up. And I'm glad that we're gonna get that popping again because it's been mothballed far too long. Um, is there anybody that had any questions for Ms. Green? All right, I will entertain a motion to appoint Charlie Baker as a member of the Highway Building Committee.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, great.
Um, Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Uh, this is an annual term, so his
Oh, okay.
His term will be up this June
Okay, so this is for
For twenty thirty, and then it'll be
For a period to terminate June twenty twenty-three. Okay.
Yes, and for reappointment as it's in
Okay. Um, committee updates, anybody have anything urgent or burning that they wanted to update us on?
I just have one for the, um, the High Street Park Committee.
Yes.
We did a walkthrough, um, last week and just tried to put, um, you know, take take the plans that have been existence for a while, um, that were going back into the minutes, it seems like they were approved by the previous board and the the High Street Park Committee at the time, different name, um, and try to envision it with the the planners and planning. Um, a couple of things came out of that. First, it was really great to be able to see where things are going to be being walked through by the professionals that put it together. But some other things that came out of that is that we think we might have to make some tweaks to the plans that were approved and resubmit them based off of some new information, some new visions, and a little bit more experience that, you know, we've all been able to kind of bring to the table. So we might be going backward in talks right now with land planning to figure out how to make those tweaks to see what that's gonna look like, uh, try to have more natural features like trees, hills, things like that, kind of existing features that are there and ones that are different than what was on the plan.
Yep.
Um, so we're trying to bring something a little bit more robust and a little bit more tangible, uh, to town meeting in in May at least to discuss because I know I don't know how how you all have been getting, but I've been getting lots of phone calls and texts and emails about, you know, updates on the on the plans and things like that. So hoping to give something, um, in addition to the various, you know, wins that we've had at at, you know, that we've discussed in previous board meetings. So be on the lookout for possibly, uh, plan adjustments, a couple more walkthroughs, uh, but I really feel like we're making some good headway.
But what I heard is article at the next town meeting.
Uh, I'm hoping.
That's what I heard.
We're working on it. We we we're working on it.
That's my takeaway.
Yeah.
Okay, that's awesome. Um, one-day liquor license. Did anybody else have anything?
Mm hmm.
Okay. Um, one-day liquor license, I will entertain a motion to approve the liquor licenses as printed in our agenda.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Okay, um, open session minutes from January twenty-fourth and January thirty-first. And again, Ms. McDowell, my eternal gratitude for you keeping them up to date and keeping us on time.
So
Okay. All in favor? Great. And then that brings us to our town administrator report. Uh, but before we have the town administrator report, Ms. Green, I did just wanna ask a question. Um, I, uh, know that we had discussed doing your review, we had extensive discussion about how we ought to do the review, yada, yada, how all those moving parts would work. Um, and I did have an opportunity to talk to, um, Kate Federoff. Uh, she had some suggestions, which I, um, had asked that she emailed to the board. Um, and the last time we spoke, Lynn was gonna add a section that Mr. Weeks had add had requested, and did you did you have an opportunity to do? Okay, so can you do that? Because, um, we really need to get, um, clipping along here on getting that review done, and we can't complete the review till we've got the revised town administrator, um, review form. So if you could make that a bit of a priority for us, because what I'd like to do is have the deadline for us to submit them by the next before the next meeting so that you can compile them.
The original deadline was today?
The original deadline was today, but of course, we didn't have the
I don't have
Um, so we may be just a tad off of the timing because we were supposed to do it in February. So if we give we give it all to Lynn, um, and, you know, but before the next meeting, we may end up discussing it in our first meeting in March. So it's it's just a little askew, but we're gonna get there, and I think we're laying a good process in place. So, um, okay, with that, Ms. Green, I will turn it over to you.
Okay. Um, all right, Chairman Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. Um, so the first thing I would like to mention is, um, the launching of the new Conflict of Interest Law online training through the State Ethics Commission. Um, it is a first time, uh, this program is hosted, um, on their own lea- learning management system. So it's a new system that they have just launched. Um, so we don't need to, I guess, watch these long videos. Um, I hear that the, um, the the online training, I I'm getting ready to do it myself, but I hear it's much easier to follow through.
I took it, I would not.
No? Okay. I haven't taken it yet, so I don't have any anything to compare it to.
Yeah.
Um, but the, uh, there there is, um, information that the town clerk has. I we also have some forms at our office, uh, that people can take, and we'll give you, um, a link right to the website. We can also email this to folks so that they can begin taking the, uh, the ethics test. And, um, it needs the the Sussex training needs to be done by March first.
Yeah, yes, Ms. Green, and thank you for mentioning that. Um, and when we get to reappointments, um, this year, um, I just wanna remind you and Ms. Sloan that this board had decided, based on some unfortunate, um, incidents that have happened recently, um, that we want to ha- make sure that one of the things that we are told about is whether people have completed their ethics training. Um, so along with, you know, whether they wanna serve again, how they completed the ethics training would be one of the things. And I was a little surprised at the tight timeline. Um, you know, because I we just found out about it last week, and I thought, well, for Pete's sake, you know, boy, people do have day jobs and a few other things, but I I, you know, I was a bit surprised. I'm not, I know it was the state and not Ms. Sloan, but I thought it was a little bit presumptuous on the state's part.
Oh, unfortunately, the the state
Did you think the same thing?
I did. I did.
Yeah, they 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 usually don't take any of that into consideration, unfortunately. Uh, but anyway, the the information is in our office if, uh, you know, people wanna stop and pick it up. Um, also, too, I, um, just really wanna recognize our, uh, first responders and, uh, Charlie Baker and Mary Collins, our COA Senior Director, um, who basically they were out in the cold, for the cold this weekend, fighting fires. Um, we had a water pipe that burst at the senior center that created quite a mess. Um, Charlie Baker was on site extremely early, had already coordinated the plumbers to come in, repair the pipe, and started cleaning up the me- the the mess, um, very early. So, um, recognizing them for those efforts again. Um, it was a very, very tough weekend weather-wise, and, um, just everybody out there, all our first responders, really deserve a big, um, thank you.
Now, along those, they do, and not only were they fighting our own fires, there was a lot of mutual aid stuff going on. It was just a it was a nightmare.
Abington, yes.
Yes. Um, um, any, I know that we had the burst, the burst pipe at the senior center, and, um, I know there were some announcements about programs being canceled, et cetera, et cetera. And I spoke to you yesterday, um, and told you that I had had a conversation with Frank Belisi, um, the Chair of Recreation Commission, and he was very amenable to having the seniors, um, up at Camp Kawani. He said he already has staff there, um, and that he would be more than glad to host them for the duration. And in particular, because, um, even if they are able to temporarily hold, uh, programs there, at some point, we're gonna have demolition, cleanup, building, and that seems like quite a distraction from chair yoga, um, and the like. So, um, you know, I I don't know if you had a chance to talk to Frank and Mary or if that's in the works, but I was just curious if you had any updates on that.
It 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 definitely is in the works. Um, I know that, um, Mary Collins had sent out an update saying that some areas of the center were were gonna be open, um, but we will continue to work on timing and scheduling for her to hold some of the programs up at the camp. Um, they, I believe the adjuster will be out tomorrow
Yeah, that's what Charlie said, yeah.
Yeah, to look at the work, and, uh, Charlie Baker is already coordinating, uh, with contractors to come out and get and get quotes for the repairs. Um, so i- it's a work in progress as we decide as she decides what programs to move up to the Camp Kawani. So we will coordinate all of that.
Okay, I just don't want, you know, those that programming is so important for a lot of our older folks to keep connected, and, um, these are difficult times for people, um, feeling connected, and I I don't want people feeling isolated because we've closed down the senior center. So whatever we can do to try to support Mary on that journey, I I know you will, but I think I speak for all of us, we really wanna make sure we help her keep things chugging along there.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Thanks, Ms. Green.
Um, and also just wanna, um, give an update on our, um, veteran service officer. Uh, the position is still advertised, um, and we did not get a whole lot of response from the express advert advertisement. However, um, it wa- it did go live on Indeed yesterday, and we we have one applicant, and also Tim White circulated the posting throughout some of the different organizations. So hopefully, we'll have more response going forward on that. Um, also, too, I'd like to just update on the part-time administrative assistant to the planning board. We will be holding interviews, um, town planner Tony Perez and myself will be holding interviews with two candidates, uh, Thursday. Um, hopefully, one one or one will be a a good fit for the town.
Good.
Uh, we can move forward with that position. Um, and I know we I I had mentioned at the last meeting that I had had a meeting with John Madden, who is a financial consultant, um, hoping to have the proposal today, um, still in the works, still waiting on it. So hopefully, next meeting, I'll have the proposal to you. Um, and also, too, just, um, so today, as you as you know, Hanson is working with Good Energy on the municipal aggregate plan. So today, the Department of Public Utilities held their public hearing, which I attended. Uh, Patrick, um, Roach attended as well, and, um, there were a number of communities that they held the hearing for today. So today was basically just, uh, myself just attesting to the fact that Hanson supports this program, as evidenced by the town meeting vote. Uh, we are excited to move forward with the program. Of course, there's a there's, um, the town can't guarantee the savings, but we do everything we can to see some savings. Um, and they, um, they were fine with everything. Also, Jim Armstrong was was a member as well, um, attended the, uh, hearing. So we'll wait now for the next steps in that process. Um, and also, um, last but not least, uh, again, I wanna thank Lynn for everything that she does in the office. Um, everything is running very, very well, and the office is in in such a good state right now. Of course, there's still improvements that we can be made, and, uh, adding the third person will really allow us to, um, you know, full speed ahead, but, um, with her addition, it's just such a it's it's great. Um, and I can't I can't commend her enough for everything that she's done.
Mr. Hugh?
With the the help for the the two of you, is that still moving forward or is there
It it is in the works. Um, there is just some, um, formalities that need to take place, um, with the respect to the union on that.
How to classify the job and that type of
Yes, and and it may require going to town meeting to make some changes, um, to the position.